Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We are calling to order a special council meeting of the Jackson City Council today, September the 11th at 2:00 PM, well, it's starting at 2:09 PM here at City Hall. Mr. Hartley reminded us this morning that it is September the 11th, which is a day of special remembrance for our country. And so we're going to open this meeting with a brief moment of silence for all those who were lost during the tragic events of 9/11 and also for all the heroes who stepped up and made a huge difference on that special day. So a quick moment of silence, please. Colleagues, does anyone have any introductions before we get started?
Madam President.
Yes, sir. Mr. Banks.
Yes, Madam President, thank you. Look, I just want to, from the city of Jackson, wish well wishes to the songwriter and singer of such songs like "Before I Let Go," "Serpentine Fire," "Southern Girl." Best wishes to the family of Frankie Beverly.
Thank you. All right, colleagues, we're going to go ahead and jump into this agenda and hopefully we can get everything done and resolved before the storm gets here. I'm taking things out of order. We're going to take number two as number one, number four as number two, because that is absolutely the most important thing we have to deal with today. And also, we have a huge deadline facing us with the budget. I am taking number one as number three, and then I'm taking number three as four. And I will have special provisions on how we handle that once we get to that point. All right, so with that, clerk, would you please get item two as number one on the agenda? On the floor, sorry.
Ordinance amending section 2-336 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Jackson, Mississippi to change the name of the Constituent Services and Information Department and place functions and duties of the Office of Publications under the Constituent Services and Communications Department formerly known as the Constituent Services and Information Department.
Okay, this is an introduction. And so if, but this is something that we discussed and it came out of the Finance Committee meeting this morning. And so, Mr. Banks, I'm going to ask you to just quickly explain this since it came out of your committee this morning. And I also would like for us to consider suspending the rules so we can go in ahead and make this effective immediately as a part of the budget this year, item four. If not, if it doesn't, if we can't do that, then we will have to come back and amend the budget at a later time. Mr. Banks?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Basically, what this does is the city has had an ordinance on its books for a while, which had a Department of Constituent Services and Information. Some mayors has used it as a department, some mayors has used it as a manager within the mayor's office. One of the things that we wanted to achieve was to streamline and make sure that we generate as much revenue as possible. And the city does have, under this administration, has been able to get the materials necessary to do its own printing, screen printing, embroidery, printing on tents, cups, mugs, all this other kind of stuff, which becomes a revenue generator for this city. Instead of departments outsourcing, we thought it would be better streamlined and manage if we were to merge all of those communication things under department. And a director who I would endorse would be Melissa Faipain, at the time that she would have chosen to come before us in confirmation, to help make sure that we achieve this. And so, Madam President, with that being said, and since we did make those amendments to move those monies within budget, I move that we suspend the rules so that we can actually take this up for adoption.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules so that we can go in ahead and make this a part of our budget.
Oh, oh. Okay, I'm sorry. That's right. I move that we go ahead and take this up for adoption.
Thank you. Are there any objections to taking this up today?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Stokes?
Thank you.
Oh, you need a mic.
Yeah, I'll be working.
Wait, wait, Mr. Stokes, here's yours. I'm sorry.
Madam President, my concerns is something I can talk through with members of this body, but I do have concerns.
Yes, sir.
My main goal, if I have to vote against this budget, is going to be because everywhere we go, we keep hearing, "We got to do more about crime. We got to do more about crime. We got to put more money into crime prevention." My belief is that we need to reduce the number of departments that we currently have. And let's go with the numbers that show our reduction in population of this city. We can't continue letting people die in this city and we don't put some meaningful money behind trying to do something about crime. I support the idea of Melissa Faipain handling this area, whatever it's going to be, because it's been a department, then it's not a department. And that's where we are now with this million that's missing, because I thought Keisha Sanders had a bun. They said she didn't have a bun. If she was a department head, she should have had a bun, but they said it's not a department. So it's a lot of ifs, ands, and buts about it, but I would rather wait and have some conversation with people about where we're going with this. And if the money's in the budget, the money will still be in the budget. But I think we need to make sure that we do all we can do to make sure this city is safe. It's, I met with the DA's office yesterday, laid a shot six times in the chest over nothing by a security guard. Some people just taking their belief that in Jackson, it's okay to kill, it's okay to shoot, and it's okay to hurt people, and we got to stop it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stokes, Mr. Banks?
Yeah, just for clarity with some of the action, Councilman Stokes, that happened during the committee, Publications was currently under IT, and we feel that it would better be aligned. And so, this is not additional monies. This is actually consolidating a division that was in the mayor's office and a division that was in IT and making it one department. And so, it doesn't take the ability, unless you're talking about those that are in the positions now, defunding all of them and using that to deal with police, which means that you'll deal with those people's jobs. But all this does is take all of those jobs that are already funded and realigning it into one department. I believe the last department head we had was Beatrice Slaughter, the late Reverend Slaughter's wife. And, you know, we're just trying to align those things so that Publications could be there. And then, I think that we, once you see some of the amendments that were made for police and the ability they have to add more to their ranks through the Department of Justice, you will be very well pleased. But if we're not able to do this, then it will throw all of the changes and things that we made within the budget during committee off, to say. And I don't know where that would leave us, but this is just a change. And then, just to say, when we came in, or when I came in in 27, 2017, that department was defunded and it was put back under the mayor's office. This just makes the department, it then takes, realigns and takes Publications from under IT and makes it a department. It doesn't cost any additional monies.
Mr. Foot?
Thank you, Madam President. The, this is, I just want to, I'm a little confused on some terminology that is in the, this ordinance. It says to change the name of the Constituent Services and Information Department, okay? We don't have a department named Constituent Services and Information Department.
Yes, we do.
We do?
Yes.
But it's not listed in the table of contents?
It's in your ordinance.
Well, anyway, this is my confusion. And let me finish the point. And then it says to place the functions of the Publications, the Office of Publications, under this new department that's going to be also renamed Constituent Services and Communications Department. So I guess my confusion is that, I know we got Constituent Services, but is it officially titled Constituent Services and Information Department? And I understand what you're trying to do, put the Publications, which is currently in the Information Technology Department, with, combine that with the Constituent Services, and then it's been renamed to Communications Department. So, I mean, I just was, it sounds confusing to me just on the surface of the paragraph. So, the, and the use of department, I think, is critical to, you know, it needs to be, there needs to be a, you know, if all the departments are listed here in our table of contents for the budget, then, but we evidently have departments, things that are called departments that aren't in here. Anyway, that's my point. My question.
Thank you, Mr. Foot. So, you know, I'm just going to go ahead and call for the vote and see if we've got the votes to consider this, that, consider, that it's.
Just one point of clarification.
Yes, Mr.
The only reason it wasn't listed in this book is because the department has not been funded since 2017.
All right.
So that's why it wasn't listed. And the ordinance caused it. And what it does is it's changing the name from Constituent Services and Information to Constituent Services and Communication, because by ordinance, that's the name of the department. So that's what you amended, just the name. And taking Publications as a division from under IT and realigning it into Constituents, what would be Constituent Services and Communication.
I think if we had added an extra senator to it, it would make it clearer to whoever reads it, that, well, you know, we're taking.
If it gets to the floor.
We're, you know, reinstating the Constituent Services as a department.
Okay, well, it's not even really officially on the floor yet. We're just, we, so I'm going to call for the vote. We had a motion and a second to, and I got fuzzy on exactly what this is. It's not, we're not suspending the rules. What are we doing, Mr. Banks?
It's just moving it over for adoption.
Moving for adoption, and that was the.
Not today.
We are, we are, Mr., that's the vote. So you get to either vote against it or for it, to just move for adoption today.
Well, it's got to be unanimous.
That's right. That's right. And so, if we don't have the votes, we're going to just leave it as an introduction.
Okay.
Okay? So, all in favor of moving this for adoption today? Opposed? Okay, it will just remain an introduction. And, Mr. Banks, I think what we will need to do is come back and amend the budget at a later time.
I think the, when is our next council meeting?
The 24th?
Yeah, we can let the amendment stand as is, and this will be, this can be adopted before the 31st.
Thank you, Mr. Banks.
Six days, I think.
Six days, that's right. We could, we could do it, that's right. All right, so, does anybody, this is still on the floor for consideration as an introduction to an ordinance. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to add to the conversation that's happened already? All right, if not, we're going to go in ahead and move now to item number four, which I am taking as item two.
Resolution approving and adopting the municipal budget for the fiscal year 2024-2025.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Colleagues, I just want to briefly say that this, this item represents many weeks and long hours and days of hard work. And we have, I am really proud of this body. I am really proud of all of you because we, of the committee, of the Finance Committee, because you have been, we have all been in this together, and everybody's hung in there, and we have worked tirelessly. And I also want to just, we can talk about this more later, but I do want to say many, many thanks to the Finance Department and the CFO for sticking with us and helping us figure all of this out. And so, with that, we now have this item before us. Mr. Banks, I'm, as the Finance Chair, I'm calling on you to run through the amendments as proposed. Are there 30 now?
Yes. Let me make sure I got the right.
I have it if you don't. I don't have the latest, though.
Yeah, I have the latest.
You do?
I'm just looking for the overall one that I just had.
Has it, has it?
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
I could use one if somebody has an extra.
Yeah, if the clerk will provide, this is the September 4th one. I need the one from September.
Oh, wait, wait, I've got it, Mr. Banks.
I need the September 11th one.
No, this is September 4th. I don't have it, sorry.
Just the extra, oh, okay.
Do you have it, Mr. Stokes, the list of amendments proposed to amend?
I do not, but I was just going over.
Well, this isn't all of them, but it's almost.
Oh, I saw it.
Okay, all right.
I had a package of.
I left mine in my office.
Okay.
Forgive us, y'all. We want to get this right.
All right, I think I got it right. All right, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and start. Madam President.
Okay.
Amendment number one, amended number one was Zurich American, 1.5 million for endowment for libraries for future expansion and 1.5 million for Tisdale Library. Amendment number two was 820,000 total, Fire Station 22, Fire Station 24, 70,000, and NABO 1 Building, 750,000. Amendment number three, 300,000 for building repairs to include but not limited to HVAC roofs, plumbing, bathrooms, small electrical, Wi-Fi, et cetera, and 1.3 million for Grove Park, totaling 1.6 million. The next amendment is an additional 100,000 for parks and building improvements totaling 1.7 million, which includes 400,000 for building repairs to include but not limited to HVAC roofs, plumbing, bathrooms, small electrical Wi-Fi, and 1.3 million for Grove Park. I think that that might have been a double, but okay. 1.5 million in Amendment Five, capital outlay for, toward public works for building improvements. Amendment Six is building repairs to include but not limited to HVAC roofs, plumbing, bathrooms, small electrical Wi-Fi, baseball fields, and 1.3 million in Grove Park, 2 million. And the reason why you hear Grove Park coming back up into 1.3 is we kept coming back and amending and adding more to the maintenance part of parks and wreck when it comes to the lighting, et cetera. Amendment Seven was the 2.7 million, $781,435 for professional services and Fund 31 to deal with right away in cemeteries. The next amendment, Amendment Eight deals with 1.75 million from ARPA to fund 391, 675,000 for chipping and grinding and closing the current sale, and 400,000 to purchase a scale for site construction. Amendment Number Nine was to fund Human Resource Department with 45,175 dollars out of IT vacant positions and reimburse the general fund where the money was taken originally. Amendment Number Ten was to inactivate the administrative clerk position to fund the voter roll or to put 32,238.60 cent toward professional service toward the voter roll within the municipal clerk's office. Amendment Number Eleven is the money left over from positions to give mayor's office 3% increase. In other words, there was a, there was some monies left over for the 3% increase, left about 48,413, and to place in the legal department to hire state lobbyists. Amendment Twelve to increase Parks and Recreation Fund to improve the lighting. It parks 270,000 and Planning Development, 1.5 million for outdoor event space using Zurich funds. Amendment Number Thirteen to fund sanitation salary increases in solid waste, which is a total of 89,000 using ARPA funds, which is one-time money, but because that sanitation fund will be a enterprise fund, it will generate revenue to be self-sufficient after this. Amendment Fourteen, that motion and second was withdrew. Amendment Fifteen, that motion and second was withdrew. Amendment Sixteen, 600, for the Police Department, is 654,804.94 requested from the Police Department. It was 562,990.90 dollars and 43 cents in vacancies. So there's a total of 91,814.51 cent to move from fund balance to police to fund raises for the Police Department, taking them at a starting pay range of 50K. That's correct, chief?
Yes, sir.
All right. Amendment Number Seventeen is from ARPA funds, one, 530,000 for infrastructure raises, and that includes those CDL drivers that were making 17 dollars an hour, and I think everybody knows if you're going to have a competitive salary to hire a CDL driver, you're not going to get nobody at 17 dollars. Then Amendment Eighteen was public works infrastructure. That was to create a separate line item within Fund 376 totaling 861,000 dollars to be used for the following. Flock safety licensing plate reader cameras at 96,000, Safe City cameras at 75,000, Collage Public Safety software at 635,515, vehicle towing at 50,000. That is a total of 861,000. Amendment Number Nineteen, Fire Department was to allocate 50,000 dollars to repair the bucket truck using Fund 376. This was the bucket truck that was destroyed at the recent fire we had on MacDow. Amendment Number Twenty is to allocate funds for city legal salary increases and three attorneys in the amount of 299,978.78, 75 cent using the insurance line of risk management, which there was a savings identified. Amendment Twenty One to allocate funds for code enforcement salaries in the amount of Amendment Number Twenty Two to allocate funds for Livingston Park improvements, amphitheater in the amount of 500,000. Amendment Number Twenty Three to allocate funds for information technology to repair fiber in the amount of 38,000 from Fund 376. Amendment Number Twenty Four to defund 25 vacant fire positions to give raises to fire employees in the amount of 1.321,000, 1.61 dollars for, to help get them in a competitive raise. Amendment Number Twenty Five to allocate funds from fund balance in the amount of 271,000, 271,729,000 to go towards fire employees. Amendment Number Twenty Six to allocate funds from 376 in the amount of 32,590 dollars for vehicle damage. Amendment Number Twenty Seven to allocate funds from 376 in the amount of 418,640 dollars to fund 6419, that's for grass cutting. Amendment Number Twenty Eight to allocate funds from 376 in the amount of 826,502 dollars to capital building outlay. And that goes back into that general maintenance fund, correct? Okay. And then Amendment Twenty Nine to allocate funds from 4240, 44240 in the amount of 137,270.53 cent for fire salary increase. And clerk, can you finish with the rest of amendments? I'm tired. And I guess these would be the amendments made today.
No, we voted in the matter of committee. They just, she hadn't gotten updated, Mr.
That's correct. So these were voted on this morning. Shaniqui Jordan, Clerk of Council, these, the remainder amendments were voted on this morning during the Finance Committee meeting, and it was voted out of the Finance Committee meeting as amended. Number Thirty, to fund the Constituent Services and Information Department and including the Office of Publications. Number Thirty One was correcting the amount for Amendment Number Seven from 2,367, 2,362,795 to the correct amount, which is 2,367,872. Number Thirty Two, the voter roll to take the 539,264 dollars from fund balance for the voter roll. Thirty Three, the remainder of the Fund 376, which was 499,770 dollars, and taking it, moving it to commercial demolitions totaling 1,392,770 dollars. Thirty Four, accepting the proposal by Human and Cultural Services, which includes 30,000 for fiber from the ARPA funds. And Thirty Five, the 1 million for the emergency fund for storm is that from FEMA, MEMA, not operate.
Right.
Okay. That concludes all the amendments.
Okay, and that represents a tremendous amount of work. Colleagues, I'm going to open up the floor now for any questions or comments regarding the proposed budget for '24, '25.
Madam President.
Yes, sir. Mr. Banks?
Yeah, we still have one, well, two, one request to look at and also one unresolved thing that it slipped me to bring up this morning.
Okay.
And that was the amount of request for vehicles across the city, which would require an increase to our master lease if the Deputy CFO of Finance has the information. Madam President, if it's fine for her to come and present it this time?
Thank you. And to be clear, Mr. Banks, if my memory serves me, this, this master lease also includes 750,000 dollars worth of police vehicles, right?
Yes, it does include 750,000 for police vehicles. I think it includes equipment, it should include the equipment from, the equipment and vehicles that were presented from every department.
Including public works.
Including public works.
Chair Tim's Deputy CFO, we went back across the street and, as you requested, we looked at all the requests that had been made, the police cars, public works, the seven cars for planning and everybody.
That's right, I forgot about planning.
So, basically, it's around 2 million dollars worth of equipment. So we did the calculations based on basically what we thought, what we kind of checked to see what the interest rate would be, and those payments would come to around 369,807.06 for the interest. And what you'll see is 330-something thousand is rolling off of the master lease in '24.
How much is rolling off, I'm sorry?
It's around 336.
And, and just for clarity, these payments are not to be, this doesn't, this, we're not adding this to this budget. This is, this will, these payments will begin in '26, right?
Correct. We will do the loan this year, but we will not close the loan out till September, so the payments will not come due, because we have to have all the titles to turn over to the loan agency. Basically, we will purchase them and then we will get the loan, and then our payments will start. The following year, we'll have two interest, we'll have two payments per year after that.
Two, two years.
That'll be divided into two.
Thank you. Mr. Banks?
Yeah, so, just for, to make sure our clerk's got it, there's 336,000 rolling off?
Yeah, the pages I gave you guys before, if you looked at it in '24, there's around 336,000 rolling off in '24, and there's a little bit more rolling off in '25. So that's why we kind of felt comfortable in going with this number.
And so, it, it's pretty much almost an even swap for what the payment is. Okay. Colleagues, I move, and just to be sure, those code enforcement or planning vehicles, those are for the code enforcement officers?
Absolutely.
All right, colleagues, I move that we.
The seven that they requested.
Okay, I move that we accept as presented by the Deputy CFO. Second.
We have a motion and a second on the, on the master lease program. Um, colleagues, with the understanding that this, the, the payment of this master lease will not be reflected in this budget, but will begin in twenty-twenty-five's budget.
Question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes?
Twenty-twenty-six.
Twenty-twenty-six, Lord.
Do you have a list of everything included?
Yes, sir.
Could we get it?
Yes, sir. It was, it was the request, uh, what we had, public. Yes, sir, we can get you that list.
Can you just verbally tell us what you remember that's on there?
Yeah, I know that was fifteen vehicles for the police department. Um, that's just purchasing them. We have it budgeted to outfit them. There was already some money in their budget to purchase a few. Um, and then there was different things. Mr. Wright, do you have it? And this is seven vehicles for, um, the planning department. So, and then it was, uh, some equipment for Mr. Wright, and some vehicles for Mr. Wright for Public Works.
But the total amount is how much?
Uh, it'd be around two hundred, I mean, two million dollars, that we will, would be the overall. But we'll divide that. Like I said, it'll be, um, some of this also we're gonna purchase, just to let you know, is there's a big auction we need to do for the police department, I mean, for the, uh, Public Works Department? And I was just informed, he said that was twice a year, so it'd be, but we'll be looking at around three hundred thousand, is all, that's what it's gonna cost. But we're gonna do an auction for the Public Works Department, and hopefully, we will pay some of this off before we ever do the master lease and use that money. If we, some of it, I still think needs to be put up to pay the master lease, so it does have no impact on next, on the twenty-six budget.
All right.
Uh, Mr. Banks?
Yeah, just for, uh, Mr. Councilman Stokes, now he's, uh, on the Finance Committee. I just wanna read through real quickly those vehicle requests. There, uh, uh, vehicles requested for the Fire Department, vehicles requested for police, uh, there's ve- there, um, infrastructure vehicles, uh, it says heavy, well, small paper, four F one fifty-four, two fifty, heavy duty trailer, knuckle boom, truck, skid, steer, sweeper, attachment, and then you, the rest is going toward those, um, code enforcement officers.
Any other questions, colleagues, about the budget?
The, all budget or this amendment?
Well, I mean, about this amendment, thank you, Mr. Banks. About this amendment, um, as proposed. Hearing none, all in favor? This is the master lease? Okay, thank you, Mr. Banks.
Abstained.
Opposed? Okay, we have one abstention and five in favor. Um, is there anything else? Mr. Banks?
Yes, one more amendment. Uh, there was a request, and I was very impressed, uh, with that, uh, presentation that we had from, um, several of our scholars across the, uh, city. Uh, and this helps to deal with not only our violence prevention, but then our civic engagement with our scholars, which I think is very important. And that request was two hundred and two thousand dollars, and then, um, two hundred to two thousand dollars, and also, there's an additional thirty-five, thirty thousand, thirty thousand to add to legal for the state lobbyists. So Madam President, I'm making a motion that we take two hundred and two thousand for the youth program, civic engagement program, uh, to be funded, and, uh, thirty thousand to be added, uh, to the legal department for the state lobbyists, uh, so that it can be a competitive rate, um, to come out of fund, is that Three Seventy-Six?
Say, say the fund again, I'm sorry.
What, which fund is that? Is that Three Seventy-Six? It's ARPA. What, to come out of ARPA? Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley. All right, so this is on the floor, any questions or comments?
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Three, let, let, let me make a correction. Three forty-one? Three ninety-one, it's hard for me to read the, all right. The correction is three ninety-one, Madam President. All right.
Okay. You got that, clerk. All right, so any questions or comments about this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Abstained, Madam President.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Okay. All right, we had one abstention, one appo- Mr., um, Mr. Foot opposed, and the rest of us, the four, there were four in favor, so it carries.
Question on the budget?
Uh, one more quick thing, mister, one more little detail. Mr. Banks?
Was there any?
Refresh my memory, did we deal with, um, stormwater? Did, wasn't that an amendment this morning? No?
Do, we, say that one more time.
Stormwater? Was there anything relating to stormwater?
Did, did we make the amendment for stormwater?
I thought we did.
Yeah, that was earlier. That was the first one we did? Yeah, that was early on.
This morning?
Not, not this morning.
No, it was early, early on?
Yes, yes, and we, uh, asked the, uh, Division Manager Infrastructure. They had everything they needed, and also, uh, the stormwater folks within solid waste, we asked them as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley.
Did we do that? All right, we need, Madam President, for my understanding, I think we need to make an amendment to move money from the Modernization Fund to, to, huh? Four hundred thousand for modernization, for professional services in stormwater. That was that requirement we had to do. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to move four hundred thousand dollars from-
Modernization.
The Modernization Tax Fund to, uh, the stormwater.
Yeah, we talked about it, and we talked about the E, the-
We talked about it at length, and somehow, I know that this just got off the-
Is this, uh, I got a question, Madam President.
Yes, wait, just a minute, Mr. Foot, Mr. Williamson.
I'm not sure that you can use that modernization money for professional services. It's very specific about what you can use it for.
That's true.
Hold on, the professional services is related to stormwater infrastructure?
Yeah, but-
You, so, hold on, hold on. Aren't we using that money to contract that other stuff dealing with stormwater infrastructure? That's what modernization is for? It's infrastructure, stormwater?
Yeah, it, it's, it's projects.
That, that is a required project by DEQ?
I think, um-
No, this is not a project, this is, this is not-
I see.
An infrastructure project.
This is a program.
It's a program.
All right, so-
That you're, it's, it's a professional service, it's, yeah.
Remember, Mr. Banks, we went down this road when we were talking about grass cutting?
Yeah, we did.
So it's the same, I think. And so what we've got to do is find a different pot of money, real quick. Uh, any ideas?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Mr. Foot, you-
We have, I'd been told that there was gonna be four hundred and thirty-one thousand, I believe it was, to finish the project that, uh, the county is overseeing on, on White Oak Creek, which is a stormwater project, but it's a, it's an infrastructure-
I think that's what it is.
Yeah, but that, yeah, yeah.
But I'm not sure if this is the same deal. I, I just know that, when you said modernization tax and-
This is for water sampling.
Yes.
All right.
And, and, oh, oh-
Any thoughts?
It's a requirement that we have to fund, is right?
Right, that's right, Mr. Banks.
Okay.
Cool. I don't think water sampling is an infrastructure.
Can, uh, Mr. Williamson, or Mr. Martin, can you comment a little bit more about the use of modernization money? I, I know you gave us a little sheet, cheat sheet on it, but could you-
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I'm, I'm kinda talking, uh, from memory right now, since I didn't know this was gonna come up, but, um, my recollection is that, you know, that money can be used for, um, stormwater, roads, water sewer, uh, infrastructure projects. So it would, it would have to, it, it's intended to actually, you know, build stuff. And, and now, you know, that doesn't prohibit you from, say, you, you know, using that money to pay the engineer that's going to design what you're gonna build.
Okay.
You know, you can, you know, it's things associated with doing that, cause-
So, so unless you're building a bridge or something, then that's different.
Or, or if you were, you know, building-
A stormwater outlet.
Right, or something like that, yeah.
Okay. Question?
Yes, sir, mister. Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you. Uh, Madam President, I, I wrote down, I, I can't see us paying the police our fund balance. Now, I wrote it down when they said, fund balance is not reoccurring money. And they asked the chief, and I think we were saying that it was gonna go for salaries. Fund balance can't be used for salaries, because there's not reoccurring money.
Sharon?
Well.
Now, that's, that's what they said, I wrote it down. Well, we can't even get them to tell us how much we got in fund balance. And we don't want to take a chance of having the police department thinking that their paychecks, raises, and all these things on solid footing, and then fund balance don't come in like it should, or something else, and then it's a house of cards that's gonna fall down, and I'm, I'm concerned, because when we look at this budget, last year's budget, total financial budget was four hundred and twenty-two million, and I know we lost a lot with water and everything else, but we down to two hundred and ninety million. Now, somewhere down the line, all of this loss is not because of water. And we, we're saying, we're giving raises, we're doing this and that, and if we don't have a solid financial plan in terms of money coming in, and a solid way to pay these employees, then there's gonna be problems later on down the road. What we used to do, and just a suggestion, you do not, and will not, tell employees that they're gonna get paid from fund balance, unless you do like Harvard Jones and Miller You'll Stop Spending and Don't Buy Ink Pencils and those kinda things. Well, I suggested-
The good old days.
Sometime ago, we're gonna have to merge some of these departments, this, this, the city just does not have the money to do all the things we saying we're gonna do. And somewhere down the line, you know, this city gonna take a major hit. And I, I know the Budget Committee done a wonderful job, they gone through the budget and did a lot of work, but, you know, a lot of this information in this budget is wrong. You know, you got money saying we're coming from Mary Jones Center, and it's almost completely closed. There's no money come from Mary Jones, there's no money come from Grove Park. You know, these are things that's in this budget, that we don't look at, it's gonna be money coming in to help pay some of these bills, and again, the major issue is, if you compare the current budget to our proposed budget, you talking about over a hundred million dollars short. And all of that's not water. I know we lost water and sewer, that's a lot of other things, I, I don't know, I looked for, what's the sales tax projection? All right, how much have we collected so far? Oh, 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 get a mic.
Wait a minute.
Yeah.
Uh, yes.
Can, yeah, can you have finance to-
Yeah, oh, yes, finance, we need, he said he's looking it up.
Oh, okay.
He, he done anything to say yet. He's got a mic.
Madam President-
Thank you, though.
Madam President, I just wanted to let you know, I do have, um, the proper information for that amendment, um, when, whenever you're ready.
Okay. All right, if we, Mr. Stokes, we're gonna put a pin in this, and we're gonna go back to the amendments on the floor. We were just, and we appreciate your going ahead and getting started, but, Mr. Banks, I'm gonna refer back to you.
All right, um, this would be four hundred thousand from Fund Three Seventy, uh, to stormwater.
And what is Fund Three Seventy, Mr. Banks?
Three Seventy is a fund, oh my God, just, go ahead, Mr. Melanbeck.
Yes, Fidelis Melanbeck, CFO. Fund Three Seventy is, uh, the twenty-twenty floods, right? Uh, that was the appropriation that the City Council set aside.
Thank you. All right. Yes, Mr. Banks?
No, that was, that was my motion.
All right, so we now have this, um, proposed amendment on the floor to take four hundred thousand, is that right, Mr. Banks?
Four hundred thousand.
Why don't you restate the motion, the, the amendment again?
All right, it's four hundred thousand from Fund Three Seventy to stormwater.
Okay, and that's because, um-
The mandatory sampling.
We, yeah, we couldn't use modernization for that. All right, any other questions about this item? Everybody know where we are? All right, all in favor? Opposed?
Abstained.
You vote that for. All right, it's five in favor and one abstention. Mr. Stokes?
Thank you.
All right, now, mister, let me just one more, are there any other, can y'all think of any more amendments that need to come before us at this time? Mr. Mr. Hartley?
Uh, not an amendment. I've been in a lot of these budget meetings, so we're ready to move it on. Uh, but just a question, uh, did we do anything for us to diversity study?
We did not. Uh, this is the first time everybody's pointed out.
And, 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 and we don't need, need to stop here, just, uh-
I think that should not get lost, though, Mr. Hartley.
Okay, okay, I think, I think, yeah, Madam President, so we just took, um, four hundred thousand from Fund Three Seventy, um, we need, we need a motion to rescind the amendment. Which amendment was that, that where?
That's right.
The, the amendment where we're taking modernization tax?
Yes, we need to rescind that.
We need to rescind that.
Okay, um-
Uh, so moved.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to rescind-
Did you get a second?
Are you referring to the one before, the motion corrected?
Yes, yes, the one on-
So you corrected that amendment, right?
So did, did my amendment correct that action?
Yes.
It did.
Okay.
That's what I thought, I was-
Okay, so I reaffirm my motion.
We almost need a roadmap, thank you, Mr. Hartley. All right, now, we are, we are now about to put on, open up for discussion the, uh, the, the budget in general. And Mr. Stokes had started, and so I'm gonna let Mr. Stokes continue, unless somebody else has something, another amendment we need to think about right now. Mr. Banks, are we good to go into the general discussion?
Yes, I, I think we're good to go, and I do want, uh, my colleague, Councilman Stokes, to know that as of five PM yesterday, Councilman Stokes? We got complete access, view ac- viewable access to all city finances within Munis, including cash reports and money in the bank. So that, I, I want you to know that, that is one of the reasons, and our, our clerks in the Clerk of Council office have done a yeoman's job with going through and assuring, um, the level of comfort needed with us as we make these decisions. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you. Madam President, it, it sound good, everything we doing, the amendments, and we putting money here and there, you got to have a balanced budget for that to work. And the first step in a balanced budget, it's gonna be your sales tax, and the first thing you gonna look at is gonna be your actual collection. So we're projecting that we're gonna get thirty-one million, and we only collecting twenty-four, so we talking about several million July.
This is as of July thirty-first.
I, I know, but I'm saying, anywhere that we, that we're short, that mean this budget gonna be short. This budget is not gonna come in, and if you start looking at the beginning of this budget, even with water, even by us losing water to the federal government, we're talking about a hundred and some million dollars. So we're saying that we putting money here and there, instead of pulling a stockpile of this money back for the hell, for some of these rainy days that's in front of us. You can't tell the police department, these officers, yeah, we're gonna pay you from fund balance, but we don't know what the fund balance is gonna be. At the end of the year, this city got to balance the budget, and what they have done in the past is use fund balance, which was wrong, instead of stop spending and living with, within your budget. But I'm saying, my concern, and what I stated before, and I don't want to reinvent the wheel, we got to put more money with police to make sure this city is safe. All these other things got to become secondary. When we talking about doing concerts and those things, that's money that's supposed to come out of fund balance. That's money that's one term. You don't, you don't- You don't, you don't tell these employees that your paycheck will depend on this and that. They need to come out the general fund. That's how they've always done. Employees money come from the general fund, and it's not gonna be cut short anywhere. But if we gonna balance this budget like we doing and saying, well, we hope this happened and we hope that happen, then when it don't happen that way, they gonna look at this body. The budget is a responsibility of the council, not the mayor. They ain't gonna blame the mayor. They gonna blame this council. So where we're saying that where we want to do this, it's easier to put some of this money back and make sure things run smoothly. And if it does not, you have extra money. They used to budget police department for 500 officers. They only have 400 and plus. Because if something go wrong, they have a cushion. We need a cushion that we don't have in this budget. And we gonna want to blame water, Jackson water and everybody else, but we losing a lot of money in this budget. Lot of money not coming in, a lot of projects is not realistic. And I know we want to get something to the state in a timely manner. But I'm concerned about what we doing with this budget. You have not downsized or realigned in such a manner where you not getting rid of jobs from people. You can take people that used to work for the police department in different divisions, they used to go out and handle abandoned homes and everything else. Let's realign that and put it back in the police and put the salaries over there. People still get paid. But that division, that department can be downsized and merged with another department. We got to make sure at the end of the day, we can pay the employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. And we certainly respect all the years you've been through this budget process. And did you have an amendment you would like to make?
Oh, no, ma'am, not on this budget.
Okay, all right. Mr. Hartley?
Yes, Madam Chair, I see Mr. Melanbeck going to the podium. I'd like to hear him out.
Thank you, Mr. Melanbeck.
Yes, I was just going to ask the Councilman Stokes I'd asked about sales tax. And so, Councilman Stokes, when I think you look at the lines, the way they're coming in, if you remember, we do have a sales tax intercept. So the revenue you're looking at, that is inclusive of the sales tax intercept for the SRF loans that we have. When you add that back in there, you're looking at roughly about $31 million is what we continue to budget for. Then, of course, the other impact that you see with sales tax, remember now, we have internet sales tax, the use tax, modernization tax, right? So that's about $10.6 million that's coming into this city. So we just wanted to respond to your question.
Thank you.
Yes.
My concern, and I see what you're seeing, but we travel these inner states. These car dealerships are leaving. Red Lobster gone, these businesses are leaving. Downtown is almost closed. I'm talking about the money that was coming into this Jackson, into the city of Jackson over the years, it's not here. But we count them in these, in this budget, like this money is still coming, it's not. We do better saying that, look, if we give 50 million, that's fine. But we know we got 40, and we can pay people. But if you say you got 50, and it does not come in, and it come in at 40 or 30, then who gonna take the loss? You gonna lay off employees. And that's what I'm saying with a budget, you don't, you don't just put all your eggs in one basket. Because in the end, when that money don't come in, and we see these businesses going, they in Franklin Madison County, whether we like it or not, and that sales tax is gone. And that sales tax has been the bread and butter for this city for many years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Colleagues, are there any, Mr. Banks?
I just want to clarify, because I think it's important that the public understands the difference. Red Lobster's gone, Metro Mall's gone, all our shopping centers are gone. But DoorDash is here. Amazon is here. Temu is here. My daughter just bought a car from Carvana. And anything sold on the internet in this city, we now get that tax. And so, there's been a replacement. Ain't nobody shopping in malls no more, they shopping at Amazon. And then they got trucks going up and down the street. People ain't going to Red Lobster and Pearl, but they gonna DoorDash it if they want it. That tax comes back into the city. So where we might see loss physically, it's been replaced by what is being done online. And we are all the better for it, just want to add that.
Mr. Hartley?
Yes, Mr. Melanbeck. Before you go.
Too quick.
Not quick enough. Just want to ask you, how confident are you that come mid-year, going towards the end of the fiscal year, that we will not disappoint our police department? That we will have the monies they need for their salaries and other necessities? How confident are you that a worst-case scenario won't happen?
Yes, from a comfortability standpoint, I am fairly comfortable, right? Because we're not talking about, you know, excessive, you know, anything out of the way. So with respect to that, I'm, you know, I'm confident and comfortable.
Would you say you're very confident?
Yes.
Say it.
I am very confident.
Thank you.
Would you put your job on the line? Are you that confident? That was what makes you a customer, you're gonna come.
Okay, order please, order, order, y'all. We gotta get, we're down to the wire on this. Mr. Banks?
Yes, Madam President, just one more amendment. And it might not be the complete cause, but I think it goes, gets us close to, you know, we have an ordinance that says we have to do a disparity study every five years, and we have not yet done one since I've been in office. And I think that is very important when it comes to what we want to achieve. And so I want to ask Mr. Melanbeck, in Fund 370, could we use that 300K to put toward that disparity study? And I know it might be extra monies that may be needed. But then, we just say whatever that is, or whenever you negotiate, at that time, we try to find the rest to make sure that we take care of that within this fiscal year?
Yes, so I think there was about a little over 700,000, right? So if we, we've done the 400,000, you're still left with, you know, roughly 300.
I'll make that a motion.
What fund, I'm sorry, what fund, Mr.?
Fund 370.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and?
Second.
And a second to make, what, this is amendment, what, 39? I've never seen such. Okay, so Amendment 39 to take 400,000 from, did you say 400,000, Mr. Banks?
300, whatever's left.
300.
Yeah.
370, you said?
300.
370, and how much are we taking from it? 300, thank you, Mr. From 370. All right, to, to, to?
Disparity study.
Help fund a disparity study. Colleagues, any other questions or comments on that item? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed?
Epstein.
We have one abstention and five in favor. All right, so that is, that is number 39. All right. Colleagues, is there any other discussion, any other concern, anything else to come before us regarding this budget for '24, '25?
Just before we vote?
Yes, sir, Mr. Hartley.
Okay, just a comment, and this is that tip of the hat to our division-level folks. They stepped up, identified the problems, identified solutions. And we asked them, how much will it take to make our city whole? And they gave us those figures. And that's what it's all about, is getting our city whole. Next challenge is going to be for those same people, division-level folks, to manage this money most effectively, most efficiently, to get the best results. We got to turn the city around, and this is the first step. Gave you what you need, now you're gonna have, the executive branch is gonna have to go to work. Thank you.
Thank you, well said, Mr. Hartley. All right, anything else? All right, all in favor of the budget as proposed? Opposed? Okay, this budget has passed. With a vote of five to one. And so, I can't tell you how much, I want to just, I just do want to pause and say, thank you so much to our clerks of the council. Y'all, please keep it down, keep it down. Hey, in the back. All right, I want to thank the clerks of the council. Y'all have put in many, many, many long hours. Finance, you're our heroes. Mr. Melanbeck, you were here, Mr. Wright, you were here with us every step of the way. Legal. But I mostly want to pause and say a huge thank you to the Finance Committee and Mr. Banks. I mean, oh my goodness, y'all, we have bonded over this budget and we have fought over this budget. And but, but what we've come up with is a budget that I think reflects all the things that each of us felt was really important. There was some give and take. And this is probably one of the most collaborative budgets I've ever seen us produce. And it was difficult, but we got it done. And thank you all. All right, so we're moving on now. Yes, sir, Mr. Banks?
No, no, this is not an amendment.
I don't think I'd entertain it, Mr. Banks.
No, one thing, and I know we mentioned the CFO's office, and, but I do, you know, this was tough, this was different. We had a lot of ups and downs, but I think we're gonna be better for it. I do want to thank the budget team.
Amen. All right, so we are now moving on, colleagues, back to item number one, which I'm having, considering it, item as number three.
Ordinance of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi preventing any administration, department head or employee of the city of Jackson from restricting counseling and/or decreasing the full viewable access of all budget information included expense and revenue reports, cash reports, and conferences against all city accounts and all information pertaining to the budget of the city of Jackson on any network, software, or record kept.
So moved.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hartley, I'm still thinking about the budget. This is introduction only, so we will take this up as we could, as early as six days, but probably at the next City Council meeting. We did discuss this this morning at length during the Finance Committee meeting, and it was voted out of committee. Are there any additional comments? Mr. Banks?
Madam President, if all possible, if there's appetite from colleagues, I believe in here it says effective immediately. Is this the one, or is that the other one due to the budget? Okay, I would like, if we can, since we have been granted access, and this is just not for now, but this is also for the future. This goes beyond us to make sure that those that are in this seat and those that are assisting us with these duties have the access to the tools they need in order to make the votes that are necessary. So I would like it to be considered to move this for adoption now.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to consider this for adoption now. All in favor?
What, you need a second?
Oh, we need a second. A motion, we need a second.
Hartley, he's second.
Oh, you seconded, Mr. Hartley?
No, he now. Oh, yeah.
No, I spoke out of turn. I did not.
You did not, okay.
Second, second.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley, thank you, Mr. Stokes. All right, we now have a motion and a second on the floor to, you know, to have this take effect immediately. All in favor, well, any discussions?
Any objections?
Any objections? None, all right, all in favor. Thank you, colleagues, I think that was very important. Well done. All right, now, we're moving on now, colleagues, to item number three.
Oh, I'm sorry, now it's on the floor for adoption.
Oh, now it's on the floor for adoption?
Yeah.
All right, all in favor?
No, 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 she gotta read it.
Oh, read it. I am tired, I am so tired, I am so, it has been a long process. I am so sorry, please get the item on the floor.
Ordinance of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi preventing any administration, department head, or employee of the city of Jackson from restricting counseling and decreasing and/or decreasing the full viewable access of all budget information including expense and revenue reports, cash reports, and conferences against all city accounts and all information pertaining to the budget of the city of Jackson on any network, software, or record kept.
So moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second on this item. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? It carries unanimously, thank you, great work, good. All right, now, colleagues, we're moving on now to item number three, which I'm taking as item number four. Would the clerk please get the item on the floor?
Order rescinding the order authorized in the mail to enter to an agreement with MV Contract Transportation, Inc. for the provision of operations and maintenance of Jackson's public transportation system, J-Train, commence in January 1, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on this item. Colleagues, I want, this is how, Drew, did you have some, Mr. Martin, did you have something to say? All right, this is how I want to do this, colleagues. This is not a public hearing. The floor is not open for whoever wants to speak or have an opinion. But I do want to give the opportunity for three different speakers. One will be someone from the union. Two, I have asked that Mr. Scott Crawford be here to speak about the impact this is having on riders and specifically the ADA riders. And then if, by chance, I don't expect this, but if anybody from MV is here and would like to say anything, they certainly are welcome to do so. So the union needs to pick somebody. And I'm gonna open it up for my colleagues to weigh in, but the union needs to pick somebody to speak. Hang on a minute, thank you. And, excuse me a minute, do I need to be a part of this? All right, so the regular public comments rules will apply. Three minutes, do you have your timer? I forgot to ask you. All right, three minutes, we will give you a little hand wave for when it's close to the end of your time. But I ask that all of you respect the three minutes. And so with that, and please state your name for the record, please welcome, come forward.
Thank you. President Charles Torres Jr., Local 1208. We've just gotten out of negotiations with MV. We've been in negotiation with them the past three days. We've stayed with them trying to come to some type of resolution concerning the unfair labor practices that they have been implementing since they've been given the contract January 1 of this year. And we've not been able to come to a resolution. So we're still at this present time on strike. So we're asking, because of the grievousness of MV since they have taken over the contract, that the city council consider terminating their contract and bringing in someone that can move the city in the right direction and get our public the transportation they justly deserve and have been getting for some time. We've never been in a situation in the history of J-Train. I've been employed at J-Train for 10 years. And we, I got some colleagues that's been there 30 and 40 and 50 years. We've never have had to come to this point where we on strike and the public is without transportation. So we need help. We stayed to 12:00 midnight on Monday. Yesterday, we stayed to about 10:30, and today, we met with them earlier. And they didn't, they didn't move on their stance from honoring the contract. Article 5 in our CBA, they didn't want to agree to it. But it's something that they said in the beginning, they were honored when they received the contract in January 1. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Did they have any time left? Just a minute, is there somebody else, was there somebody else who wanted to take up the last minute? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, and thank you very much, President, for coming before us, we appreciate your comments. Mr. Banks, I'm not recognizing comments from the council at this point. All right, and so now, Mr., Dr. Crawford, can you hear us? Yes, there you are.
Yes, yes, I can. Thank you, Madam President.
State your name for the, yeah, don't forget to state your name.
Scott Crawford, Dr. Scott Crawford. I am a longtime paratransit user and rider of J-Train, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the thousands of individuals who've been left stranded the past week due to what we believe is an unnecessary strike. I know a little bit about the budget, about this negotiation, and I do know that ATU has gotten almost everything they asked for. And I'm asking the folks at ATU to prioritize your customers. You're here to serve the public, we value your service, we depend upon you for our lives, for our livelihoods, for everything that we do in life. And this is just a disaster for some of the most vulnerable people in our capital city, and we're asking that both parties end this now. Regarding the, the motion on the table about ending the contract, I, I'd like to speak to that as well. One of the general principles in psychology is when you're in a crisis situation, the last thing you want to do is to take any drastic action that could make things worse. And here we are in the midst of a transit crisis, and the idea of terminating the contract with MV is just deeply unwise. It's deeply unwise, it would create unnecessary chaos in an already sensitive, difficult situation. I have my friends trying to get their groceries, people trying to get to dialysis, people trying to get to their jobs, you know, we're talking about service-level workers who are cleaning the rooms at the University of Mississippi Medical Center. They ride transit, I know, I ride with them. How are they getting to work? How are people getting dialysis? I'm asking the ATU and MV to prioritize the vulnerable here, to serve the public, and to do the right and morally ethical thing. I'm also asking that the city council not make anything worse by terminating a contract and bringing on all kinds of more chaos.
Thank you, Dr. Crawford, your time, time is up. Mr. Stokes, I'm not allowing comment from the council at this point, we're gonna get through these comments first, but thank you. And so, thank you, union, thank you, Dr. Crawford. I understand somebody from MV is here, is that correct? That would like to-
Madam President?
Yes.
Hi, can you hear me? Hi, hi, this is Jared Andrews, Chief Human Resources Officer for MV Transportation.
I'm sorry, could you state your name again, I'm sorry?
Yes, Jared, J-A-R-R-E-T-T, Andrews.
Okay, you may, you may begin, your three minutes starts, thank you.
Thank you, I'd like to start with a little background on MV Transportation, which I think will be helpful to provide context to where we are with the union here today. We provided transportation services for forty-nine years through hundreds of contracts in over thirty-five states. We are eighty-eight percent unionized, so almost nine out of ten, eighty-eight percent of our employees are union. We consider ourselves one of the most union-friendly companies in America in any industry. As a result of that, we negotiate no less than twenty to thirty CBAs every year with unions across the country without any issues through a cooperative relationship. Given that history, we have been shocked by the actions taken by ATU 1208 leaders. Our goal in every contract is to deliver, to deliver world-class service and outstanding customer experience, and world-class safety. That's what they deserve, and we're passionate about it. As a part of our commitment to world-class safety, we believe fundamentally there are certain violations, like driving into pedestrians, or killing someone with a bus, that mean that a driver can no longer be trusted to provide service safely, and should not be driving one of our vehicles any longer. And that's a philosophy developed through fifty years of experience, and we believe it's paramount to having a safe culture. We think it's common sense. However, the Local 1208 leaders seem to think it is okay to drive into pedestrians or kill someone with a bus and have no consequences.
Order, order-
I want to be clear on where we are on the state of negotiations. On August twenty-ninth, we had agreed on every single item except one word out of eighteen thousand words in our collective bargaining agreement. As Mr. Crawford noticed, noted, we had agreed to virtually everything except for one word. And that word was, if a driver commits any of those terrible acts, like hitting a pedestrian or killing someone with a bus, that person will lose their job because they have proven themselves not able to drive safely. The union opposed that. Then they called a strike over that, because apparently they think it is okay to kill a person with a bus and not face consequences. And they think it makes sense to have a strike over one word, rather than negotiate while still providing service. That strike has cost the people of Jackson service for eight days. It has cost each of the union members over one thousand dollars in miss pay, and their health insurance will expire on September thirty. The union finally agreed to get back to the table this week on Monday. We were looking forward to cooperative negotiations over the one remaining item outstanding. Instead of moving forward, the union moved backward and brought up twenty items on Monday that were either brand-new or had already been agreed to. We said we will reaffirm our position on August twenty-ninth, plus, we will add a significant safety incentive bonus-
Sir, I'm sorry, your time is up. All right, order, please, order. All right, now, colleagues, I, I'm gonna tell you that where we are on this is this order that has been proposed by Mr. Stokes. Mr. Stokes, it's no different than it was yesterday, so it's still got some legal issues. But, but the bigger issue, I think, facing us is that we are now in a situation where we have potential litigation. And so, what I am going to propose is that we consider going into closed session to discuss going into actual executive session, so that we can be briefed by our lawyers, and that we can talk about the potential litigation facing us. And so, with that, colleagues, I would, I would like to have a motion and a second on that. Mr. Banks?
Motion yet, but I, the question I want to ask, is this collective bargaining agreement public? Is it somewhere where we can see it?
Drew Martin, City Attorney, the short answer is there's not currently an active collective bargaining agreement. That's part of, that's what they're negotiating. The previous collective bargaining agreement between the union and Transdev is a public document. It was, it was set by its own terms to be active through two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, so-
The previous contract.
So there's not one that exists between yous?
Correct, yeah.
All right, then, the other thing, I, I just want to say this because of my uneasiness hearing all sides. Not only are the riders members of this community in our wards, but the drivers are members of our communities and wards as well. And it, it did take me, or give me some pause to hear anyone suggest that people just have a problem with killing people, that was just too much, too far, because some of these folks in this room, I know, so I just want to say that.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. Mr. Stokes and Mr. Hartley?
Madam President, I, I think we should keep this in open session. I think that we need to make sure everyone here and everybody on the same page, otherwise they're, otherwise they may think the fix is in, and so I hope we'll keep it open, and, you know, some agreements we have are legal, some we don't. Secondly, you know, I understand big cities, I lived in Houston, I lived in Dallas, I lived in a lot of places, and the idea to poison the mind of council members by saying things that has never happened, kill someone with a, someone with a bus, we don't have buses in Jackson for ever, nobody just kills somebody with a bus, run over citizens, you know, why would you even poison the mind of people saying those things? That's like someone saying that this man might be a sniper. Ain't no truth to it, but someone could put that out. So let, let's stick with truth-
Yeah.
-versus trying to create uproar.
Mr. Hartley, I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Stokes.
Counselor, can I make one clarification to my statement?
Yes, yes, Mr.-
So in response to Councilman Banks' question, I was just reminded, that previous collective bargaining agreement that's good through two thousand twenty-five with Transdev and the union, in the MV contract, there is a provision where MV promised not to take any action that would be violative of that previous collective bargaining agreement.
Follow-up?
Sorry, Mr.-
Follow-up?
I'll defer.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hartley. Mr. Banks?
With, with that being said, in the order that we passed, was there anything that spoke to, anything in that order that spoke to it, in the order that, that, that we passed when it came to MV?
I don't know, I haven't seen, I, I don't, I haven't reviewed that order. I have to pull it. What I can tell you is that the, well, just what I said, that, that collective bargaining is public, I have a copy, and, and in it, well, and in the MV contract, there's a provision where MV promises not to take action that would violate that CBA until a new one is negotiated.
Let me ask you this, was that contract attached to the order we approved?
I, I just don't know.
Okay.
Likely, but I don't know.
More than likely?
More than likely.
Mr. Hartley?
Yes, Attorney Martin, and please stop me if I'm going into something that, that we need to do in executive session, but I had asked yesterday about a backup plan, and who was responsible, because the main thing is our folks are not getting transportation needs met. And I would think that someone would be responsible for having some type of contingency plan that can be pulled out of the books, whether it's, you know, you know, any taxis, or rentals, or whatever. So is there a backup plan when this happens, so that we can prevent this from, from being some type of, not only inconvenience, but lack of a necessity for our, our people?
The, the city doesn't have a backup plan that I'm aware of, of course, we rely on the contractor to perform those services. The MV contract requires them to have a backup plan, and to my knowledge, one has not been provided.
So there-
It's possible that one has, and I'm just not aware of it, but I am not aware of one.
Well, I, I would imagine if they had one, that now would be a good time to use it, and to pull it out.
By my reading of the contract, they're overdue to provide it. Yes.
Mr. Banks?
Yes, in lieu of that, that we voted on, if they don't provide their backup plan within a timely manner, aren't they in breach of contract?
I think that giving an opinion on breach or not would be more appropriate for executive session.
Okay, and, and my other question is-
Mr. Hartley?
Is, you know, if we, if we go down this road, I'm, I'm assuming that there would be time, we'd have to go through the normal contractual process.
I believe so.
And that would take time. I, I just see it as, you know, all this is loose-loose for our citizens. We need to get back to work, we need to pick up our, our, our folks, we need to make this thing work. I agree with my colleague, comments made by the contractor was very insensitive, that was wrong, and he's, and he repeated it several times. I do not believe that we have someone that's out there that has some vendetta against getting behind that, that steering wheel of running over citizens, you know, so I think that was a stretch. And my just comment is that we need to sit down and talk and get this thing worked out.
Thank you. All right, colleagues, now that we've had a chance to discuss this within limits, is there an appetite still for getting into executive session to hear from legal? Yes, Mr. Banks?
Madam President, I move that we go into closed session to discuss going into executive sessions for two matters, this one, and then also pending-
Item five.
Yeah, pending litigation, yes. Second.
Thank you, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a, and a second on the floor to go into closed session for the purposes of discussing going into actual executive session to discuss pretending, potential litigation, and also litigation with, regarding items four and five. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, it's a vote of five-one. We are now in closed session. We are- Colleagues, thank you for your careful consideration during executive session. We are now out, officially out of executive session. During executive session, there was no official action taken on item five, which was discussion of litigation, and, but on item four, we voted with, it was a vote of two in favor and four. It was two-four, two in favor, four opposed. It failed, the measure failed.
And Counselwoman Lindsay, just a correction, the agenda number is agenda number three.
Oh, I'm sorry, agenda item three, thank you. All right, colleagues, yes, agenda item three failed with a vote of two in favor and four opposed. All right, colleagues, is there anything else, or administration, anything else to come before this body at this time?
Madam President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Banks?
I move to amend, I'm just playing.
You would be sitting here by yourself, Mr. Banks, you could amend away. All right, so colleagues, thank you for that bit of levity, Mr. Banks, yes.
I, I just got this text-
Yes.
That, oh, no, I'm sorry.
Okay, I just want everybody, thank you, y'all, if there's no-
Oh, 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 one concern, I forgot, I'm sorry, but this is important.
Yes, sir, of course.
I, it just came to my attention that the South, three of the South Jackson fire stations are offline, and we got this storm.
IT, you say offline?
Like, IT-wise, yes. Can, can, can just somebody provide us something, anything that we need to be, that needs to be done?
Is it, is it, yes, Mr. Banks, that might be some sort of communication.
Yes, just, 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 just let me know, and we could get some word out, because Griselda and I share Fores Hill, and that's a valuable one.
Okay. Thank you for that important note. All right, that is a reminder, we all need to be, you know, hunker down and be careful. All right, yes, sir, yes, ma'am.
Okay, Richards will not pick up garbage on Thursday, September twelve.
All right, thank you. All right, colleagues, nothing else to come before us at this time, this meeting is adjourned.